Yes.
Well, five minutes.
Just be.
I know.
I like this long.
Absolutely.
Nice.
Long.
I didn't change your shirt.
This must be my color.
And no hands.
And no hands.
Oh, is he listening?
I didn't even call him.
So.
You got your image in there, right?
I do, right here. It's just something you did to six that we didn't have on.
We got a nice camera right here.
It's okay. We have Cora, so Long and Andy are.
Andy's not coming.
Yes.
One second. I just got the text.
You're not in the know. I don't know how to.
In the canoe.
I know the end result. I know the last chapter going to ten there.
I remember. Yep, skip all the way. But the light don't.
There you go, the insurance.
Positive. It's a positive.
I've got two years.
You'll catch me up quick. You asked for it.
See my pen, Mike, maybe?
He needs.
It goes good like a fire hose.
I don't see.
Figured you could show me like.
So who's gonna be vice mayor? Can we try?
Corey, I think.
Okay.
For now. We'll give him a shot.
Which one's your friend, Drew? He's in the back world. Free back.
Hi, Andrew.
Well, good evening.
Andrew's back.
Hi, Andrew.
I am back. Sorry. In person at least.
No puppy?
No, he's at home. He's in home. He's, uh, he's happy to see us back, too. He stopped chewing the door frames now.
Oh, excuse me. Getting close to bedtime or dinner, Long? Cause I'm sleepy. I were in.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm on restrictions.
You're very awake, is that?
Yeah.
She got a twitch close by.
Yeah.
Who's gonna keep trying to work on your heart?
Buddha, it's his name. No Budo. The honor, cardio, honor, health, cardio.
Let's call the meeting to honor. Would you please rise for our pleasure ladies?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Councilmember Perkins is absent. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mayor Kraft.
Here.
Our town attorney is present remotely.
Introduction, presentations, and proclamations. Presentation by Bud Nelson, event organizer regarding the first annual Chino Valley Community Fast scheduled for November nine through fifteen, twenty twenty, sponsored by various faith-based and other organizations. Mr. Nelson. Hi, how you doing?
Hey, how are you?
Been awesome seeing you.
Couple of weeks, yes. Well, first off, I wanted to thank you guys for having me on. Just, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we're doing with this Chino Valley Community Fast. What we are doing is asking the public to skip two meals and to donate the monies that they would have spent on those two meals to basically help the people of Chino Valley and Paulden. We specifically are, this year are focusing on the senior citizens and the veterans through the Meals on Wheels. We are doing the Senior Center, the Food Banks, the BFW, and the American, or sorry, the, uh, Yavai Regional Transit. So those are the organizations that we're trying to support this year. With, with this program, we are gonna do it annually every year around this time, the second week in November. And we are basi-, we're basically hoping for support from the, from the town council. The, we have a proclamation, I guess, that has been written up already. And so that, that hopefully will really help the, uh, the cause. Sorry, make sure I covered all my bases. Oh, the, the ways that, that are available to donate the money are the three major local banks, the Chase, the One AZ, and the National Bank. And, um, we are also gonna be having a PayPal account that will be linked to the One AZ crediting account. Let's see here. I think that's all I had. Is any, any questions you had during that?
This is all set up. We're ready for donations at any time.
As of tomorrow, the, the Chase will be put up and the other two are already set up, yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Another, another question that most people have had is, are we at five oh one C three? Not yet, that we didn't get done this year. It'll be, it'll be set up for next year.
Thank you for the question.
Yeah, so it's Chino Valley Community Fast is the name of the account we can put donate money to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Item three, let's go to call to the public. Call the public, not funny for the public to address the council. Any issue within jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Total time to call this out may be up to thirty minutes per minute. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directly staff to study the matter, schedule the matter for further consideration, decision later, and responding to criticism. If there is anyone that would like to speak under call. All right, come up front and give us your name, please. We have three minutes.
Three minutes. My name's Ryan Roberts. I live in this town. I've come a couple of times. The new UDO that you guys passed on the consent agenda, we, you know, we warned you that, you know, it was gonna hurt families, you know, people that ran for their family, we're gonna now have to do a subdivision, which is significantly more expensive. It hasn't even been passed for a month, and I already have one of those calls. They're gonna have to put in a fifty-foot road and they're gonna have to put in a sixty-foot cul-de-sac, which is the largest cul-de-sac in the state. But at the end of this cul-de-sac, they're gonna have to dress it up for fire trucks or whatever. He's gonna have an acre. That sixty-foot cul-de-sac is a quarter of an acre. So, I mean, it's, it's already happened. It's, it's gonna significantly affect these people. I mean, before they'd pay nine hundred dollars for a lot split, now they're gonna pay four thousand dollars for a subdivision plat. So I, I don't know how else to appeal to you guys. I feel like the UDO was passed and it took in account nobody in the town. Anybody with high acreage that could be split down, now they can't. The parent parcel, you're kicking around the idea of a ten-year limit on it to where it reset the parent parcel. That apparently didn't make it at all, so it's perpetual parent parcel forever. People are gonna have to do subdivisions if they don't have water credits. They can't go over five splits ever. So if you had two hundred acres, you could only split it five times and you get no money for your land. So, I mean, this UDO that you guys passed devalued everybody's land that owns more than the minimum acreage. And I, I'm at a loss. I don't know where to go. I mean, I couldn't get you guys to care about it. I can't get the town to listen to me. I, my question for the town is, where do I go to go above your heads? So I can get somebody to listen and care. It's still my opinion that you guys don't have jurisdiction over two and a half acres. In my opinion, it's clearly stated in the state statutes. I sent that email to all of you. I got zero responses. And I, I don't know what else to do. If I can't get you guys to respond to me as a citizen, I, I don't know where else to go other than above you. So if somebody could tell me, that'd be great. And I'll, I'll try that avenue, cause, I mean, I, I can't afford to sue you guys. And that's the problem that's gonna exist is people will have to do a subdivision and it'll be cheaper to do the subdivision than to sue you guys and, and make it right on their end. So i- if you guys have any idea where I can go to contest that further and find somebody to care, that I appreciate it. Thank you much.
Thank you. Town manager, would you, uh, please? Have somebody in the place with that. Probably your attorney. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Right now, let's go on to the next phase. Current events, summaries, and reports. This item for information only, the mayor and any council member or town manager present a brief summary or report for current events. List below may also be presented. Presentation and information requested by the mayor and council. Questions may be answered. No action will be taken. Status report by mayor and council regarding current events.
Nothing. I'm good. Yes, sir.
Nothing. Okay. We are in the process of, since our town manager decided that she wanted to bail out on us. She, she is retiring the first of March. She has her time in, so. It's right here.
Is it on, boss?
Is it on? Hello?
Hit your button.
What? I didn't want you to hear me.
That's better.
I put my book on it, turned it off, sorry. Okay, she is retiring, so we're in the process of recruiting nationwide and see if we can hire a town manager to replace her. I'm gonna put her so she can.
The mayor and council need her name.
You turn it on with the button.
Thanks. As you know, this is the first time we've ever gone out for a national search for recruitment for a town manager position, and I think we've been very happy with the initial results. We had a hundred and fourteen submittals. The position closed at the end of October. We had a hundred.
At the end of September, we had a hundred and fourteen submittals for, um, the position.
I think I found it here, my. Read that?
Yeah.
So the recruiter then narrowed it down to fifteen that he felt were the best qualified. And then from there, he did initial interviews and a questionnaire with them. It had about eight questions that were about seven pages long that they had to do in a weekend if they were still interested. Then he had a Zoom interview with them, narrowed it down to nine for the council's consideration. The council has narrowed that down to four candidates that will be visiting us on November fifth all day long for interviews. So hopefully after that, we will have a discussion that you guys will be able to select your next town manager from these four candidates. So that's a, that's a nice process through this recruiter. May I go on for one more item? We have elections next Tuesday, November third. So this is just a little update on what goes on with the election day and what's available here in Chino Valley. Our vote centers are Grace Church on State Route eighty-nine and Road Four South at the Roundabout and First Southern Baptist Church on State Route eighty-nine on the west side of the highway between Road Two North and Road Three North. The vote centers will be open from six to seven P M. We have a drop box out here on the side at Town Hall here for vote for ballots. It will be open only until seven P M. that evening. Do not put early ballots in the U S mail right now. Use the drop box or drop off at a vote center on Election Day. And then if you have, need more information on the town's utility franchise ballot questions, which we've gotten plenty of questions, go to our website, www.chinoaz.net.
Okay, let's go on to current, uh, go on to consent agenda. All these items listed below are considered to be routine. They may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request one item from the consent agenda be considered and discussed separately. Pull anything?
Yeah.
Pull the item?
I'll make a motion except consent agenda items A and B as written.
Second, our motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's go into six action items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting, hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to A R S three eight four three one oh three A three for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public. No action may be taken in executive session. Let's go on to item A, consideration possible action to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty eight 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 to resume approximately nine point six two acres from S R two point five, single-family residential, two point five acre minimum zoning classification to A R five agriculture residential, five acre minimum zoning classification in order to resume the operation of a commercial greenhouse. Well, let's look.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and town council. The item before you is a requested zone change from S R two point five, single-family residential, two point five acre minimum to A R five agricultural residential, five acre minimum to allow for the resumed use of a commercial greenhouse. The applicant and property owner is in attendance tonight. The subject property is located on the north side of West Center Street, approximately seven hundred feet east of the northeast corner of South Road One West and West Center Street. To the east of this property, you have Granada Estates subdivision. To the south and west of the property. And to the north and southwest of this property, you have agricultural properties. The subject property itself is nine point six two acres. It has a width of approximately six hundred and seventy feet and a length of roughly six hundred and twenty feet. The property is currently zoned, as previously mentioned, single-family residential, two point five acre minimum. The property has historically been used as a commercial greenhouse since the early nineteen eighties. Up until the early two thousand teens, when the use was discontinued. During this time period, the town adopted a new, new zoning districts that led to the use becoming non-conforming on the property. Following the cease of operation on the property, it eventually lost its non-conforming status due to the time that had elapsed to, in order to operate as a commercial greenhouse. Currently, the property is used for a single-family residence that is existing on site and still retains the empty facilities on site. The town's general plan designates a subject parcel in the surrounding area as medium-density residential, which conforms to the requested zone change by the applicant. So as you can see here, we've got a whole bunch of medium-density residential surrounding the subject property. And then significantly to the east of the property, you have commercial multifamily designation. So if the zoning being S R two point five, the applicant would like to resume that or to rezone to A R five. As you can see, to the north and southwest of the property, they're supporting zonings of the agriculture residential, five acre minimum. You also have the S R one zoning districts to the west, east, and the Granadas Estates subdivision and to the south off of, or sorry, Smith Court there. This item went before planning and zoning on October sixth of twenty twenty, during which the commission members discussed the following items. Can this property be subdivided in the future based upon the requested zoning and the current acreage of this property? It will not be able to be sub, uh, resubdivided or subdivided under the current zoning without going through the process once again. There are nine point six acres and change, and the requested zoning is a five acre minimum. There was a question regarding the right-of-way dedication. At the time of Planning and Zoning Commission, there was not a firm number for what the right-of-way dedication was going to be required. This was due to the new subdivision regulations that were being adopted that reduced the required right-of-way dedications on Center Street. Since that time, it has been determined that it is going to be an additional twenty-foot dedication. And then a final question that was brought up was confirming the fact that medical marijuana could not be cultivated on this site, and that is correct. The only site, the only zoning district that can cultivate medical marijuana is the industrial zoning district. This item was approved with a seven to zero vote, and there was no public comment on this item. So in regards to general plan and zoning conformance, the property has a general plan land use designation of medium-density residential. The applicant is requesting a rezone from S R two point five to A R five to resume the operation of a commercial greenhouse. The applicant's proposed zone change meets the intent of the medium-density residential designation. And zoning conformance, the general area supports both medium-density residential and medium-density agricultural zoning, and this is just based simply on the surrounding zonings of this property. So in conclusion, staff have approval to town council to rezone approximately nine point six three acres of real property from S R two point five, single-family residential, two point five acre minimum to A R five agricultural residential, five acre minimum to allow for the operation of the, of a commercial greenhouse to resume with the following stipulations. An additional twenty feet of right-of-way dedication to be made along West Center Street to ensure compliance with town code. And two, any new construction will need to hook up town, two town utilities located within West Center Street, and any new construction will need to come through the site plan review process. With that, I will turn it over to the council for any questions and discussion.
The only thing that I noticed, well, is the possible concern about light pollution. And I'm guessing that that question was answered within our town code.
Any light pollution, anything like that will be addressed during site plan review process. On, town staff will evaluate and make sure it complies with town code. Okay.
I'm good. I'm good. All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. We adopt ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighty-eight to approve rezone of approximately nine point two acres from S R two point five, single-family residential, two point five acre minimum zoning classification to A R five agricultural residential, five acre minimum zoning classification in order.
Town.
Yeah. In order, what was it? To resume the operation of commercial greenhouse to resume with the following recommendations. Number one, additional right-of-way of dedication of twenty feet may along West Center Street to ensure compliance with town code right-of-way requirements. And number two, any new construction will need to hook up to town utilities and will need to come through site plan review.
Second. I have a motion, do you have a second?
I make a second.
My motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rose name, motion carries. Okay, let's go on to the consideration possible action to approve the Perkinsville forty preliminary plat to subdivide approximately forty-four point three acres into one hundred and sixty-one lots with an average lot size of approximately seven thousand square feet developed in multiple phases located in the north, each corner of each Perkinsville Road and Road One, north east.
All righty.
Your show.
It is my show. Perkinsville Forty subdivision. This item is strictly to address the, at a conceptual level. It is not to address the property's entitlements. The app and engineer are in attendance this afternoon, or this evening. The property itself is located on the northeast corner of East Perkinsville Road and North Road One East. To the south of the property, you have the Chino Valley Recreation Center and Aquatic Center. To the south of the property, you have the Chino Meadows Unit One subdivision. And then directly east, you have the Bonnie Plants cultivation facility. Or sorry, it's a commercial greenhouse, not a cultivation facility. So to briefly recap the history of this development, back in two thousand eight, town, or two thousand eighteen, town council approved the rezoning of this property from agriculture residential, five acre minimum to single-family residential, zero point one six acre minimum with the planned area development. The planned area development itself allowed for modifications to the development standards within the S R zero point one six zoning district for items such as setbacks, building height, and lot coverage. In addition to the modifications, a conceptual development, a plan also accompanied the planned area development. The preliminary plat itself has a total of a hundred and sixty-one acre proposed lots with an average lot size of fifty-six feet by a hundred and twenty-five feet. The average lot width of the proposed hundred and sixty-one lots is seven thousand square feet. There is internal sidewalks within the subdivision as well as an internal trail system provided throughout the open space areas. The development will also be connecting to town water and town sewer. So at the end of this, I can pull this preliminary plat up so we can further discuss in a better image. The Planning and Zoning Commission was held on October sixth for this meeting, during which the commission and staff discussed the following issues with the preliminary plat. At that time, there was proposed addition or extension of the Valentine Road, which is south of the access off of North Road One East here. It did not quite line up. Staff recommended as a stipulation that this would either align with Valentine or Adams up here to ensure that there's a four-way intersection for safety concerns. There was questions brought up whether or not this proposed preliminary plat conformed to the conceptual plan. Staff has determined that it does conform substantially with the, uh, the conceptual plan that was approved during the rezoning. Big ticket item for this also was safety concerns of the subdivision at the entrance of East Perkinsville Road down here. The big item was bus pullouts throughout the subdivision itself. The creation of these, of both of these items would end up creating a larger safety concerns and they would mitigate. So at the direction of the town engineer, these are not required. Oh, sorry, excuse me, not recommended. And then the final question that was really brought up during the Planning and Zoning Commission was waiving. The applicant had respectfully requested a waiver for the East Road Three North right-of-way dedication per code. East Road Three North lines up with the northern portion of this property. So per code, as well as the stipulation on the zoning ordinance itself, required a twenty-five-foot dedication for the future expansion of East Road Three North. So this item ended up being approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission with a five to two vote. The two no votes were citing safety concerns as their reason for the no. And then there was no public comment during this meeting. Following the planning and zoning meeting, the applicant submitted this revised conceptual plan addressing the concerns that were brought up. As you can see, that the western axis along North Road One East has shifted from Valentine to now align with Adams to create a very nice, in staff's opinion, entry feature to the subdivision here. It also addressed the twenty-five-foot dedication on the north portion for East Road One, East Road Three North, excuse me, the eventual build-out of that. These proposed changes still give the substantial conformity to the proposed or the prior approved preliminary or conceptual plat that was approved during the zone change itself. So for the proposed preliminary plat itself in conformance, the Perkinsville forty preliminary plat meets all the requirements set forth as section five point two point three of Unified Development Ordinance. The site will have access on both East Perkinsville Road and North Road One East. The proposed development will be connecting to both town water and town sewer. The Development Services Department and Public Works Department have completed an initial review of the plat. After approval of the preliminary plat, the project will go through technical review process and then come back through the public hearing process for final plat review. So in conclusion, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to Town Council to approve the Perkinsville forty preliminary plat to subdivide approximately forty-four point three acres into one hundred and sixty-one lots with an average lot size of approximately seven thousand square feet. Developed over multiple phases with the following stipulations. One, align the proposed North Road One E entrance off, the entrance off of North Road One East with either Valentine Road or Adams Drive. Two, make a dedication of twenty-five feet along the northern property line for East Road Three North. And three, propose a pathway along East Perkinsville Road will need to be paved and need to be meandered. With that, I will open it up to questions or discussion from the council.
Yes, can you back up to the, sorry, can to the like three slides?
For preliminary plat itself?
Yes.
Let me pull up a cleaner picture so we can see it a little bit better.
My question has to do with sidewalks. I remember when we looked at this way back, they had sidewalks along One East and are those there or not there?
They will be there. You know what, I might have grabbed the wrong preliminary plat here, but I can tell you, assure you one hundred percent that there will be sidewalks along North Road One East as well as Perkinsville.
Okay, yeah, because this one didn't even show the easement on the three northeast.
Correct.
That was my question.
All right.
I know they don't own the property, but are we going to connect Reed North to One East?
Eventually, that is, that is the intention. Once this property develops, it will likely be a stipulation that there is some right-of-way given.
That's it. I have no comment. And I need a motion, sir. I'll make the motion that we approve conditional use permit to allow a model home. Sorry, excuse me. Now I'll make a motion to approve the Perkinsville forty preliminary plat to subdivide approximately forty-four point three acres into one hundred and sixty-one lots with average lot size of approximately seven thousand square feet. Developed over multiple phases with the following stipulations. Number one, align the proposed extension of Valentine Road with the existing Valentine Road. Make a dedication of twenty-five feet along the northern property line for East Road Three North. That was number two, sorry. And number three, propose pathway along East Perkinsville Road will need to be paved and will need to meander.
Correction, didn't you say Adams was being the road, not Valentine?
Correct, yes. So that, that was, the original intent was to have it aligned with Valentine and based on their new conceptual plat. They are now choosing to align it with Adams, so that will need to be modified.
Okay.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second it with the modification of Adams Road instead of Valentine's.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye. Rose name, motion carries. Let's go to I D C. Consideration possible action to approve a conditional use permit to allow a model home complex and temporary placement of a sales trailer approximately seventeen hundred feet west of the southwest corner of West Road Four North and North Road One West.
All right. For you is the, is for an approval of a model home complex and sales trailer for the anticipated Heritage Point subdivision. The applicant, like the other item, is in the audience tonight. Approximately seventeen hundred feet west of the, of the southwest corner of West Road Four North and North Road One West. To North. To the east of the properties, you have the Appaloosa Meadows subdivision. And then to the south and east of the property, you have the Chino Lakes subdivision. All of the subject properties are zoned SR one, single-family residential, one acre minimum. Under the U D O, a conditional use permit is required for the construction of a model home complex as well as a sales trailer on site. The applicant is asking for approval of this in anticipation of the final plat for Heritage Point coming within next month. And then December as well before you. Town staff has reviewed the provided site plan and feel that it is within conformance of all applicable town codes and requirements. Planning and zoning meeting was held on October sixth, twenty twenty. Couple of the questions asked by the commission was in regards to utilities and the completion date. Utilities for the model home complex and sales trailer will be handled through well and septic on the respective home sites, home parcels. And then in regards to the completion date, the applicant stated that they anticipate the completion date from anywhere between three to five years. Based on this comment, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended an additional stipulation of a five-year review period upon approval of the conditional use permit. In conclusion, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to Town Council for a conditional use permit to allow a model home complex and temporary placement of a sales trailer with the following stipulations. One, construction of the model home complex cannot begin until approval of the Heritage Point final plat is recorded. Two, the sales trailer cannot be placed on site until approval of the Heritage Point, yeah, Heritage Point final plat is recorded. Three, the sales trailer and accompanying site improvements, i.e. the parking lot, walkways, portages will be removed within two months of the final lots start of construction. Four, the final plat approval for Heritage, if the final plat approval for Heritage Point is not received within one year of this conditional use permits approval, the conditional use permit will expire. And number five, which was added by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the conditional use permit will be reviewed at a, at five years from date of approval. I will turn it over to the council for any questions or discussion.
I thought this had been brought up once before.
I am not aware of that coming up.
Okay, I see there's signs out there.
So the signs, can you elaborate, what, what signs are you referring to?
Brown homes and that across them.
I, that, yeah, I would recommend, or I would assume that those are anticipation of Heritage Point coming in and advertising the future development.
Thank you.
Do we have anything in our code that requires it? Any landscaping or anything for the, the sales trailer setup?
Um, as far as, i- it's based on land use itself within the residential subdivision. I don't believe that there are any required landscaping. However, the applicant is providing. There is a form of landscaping. He did submit a landscaping plan that I can bring up for you here real quick.
The, my concern though is if this doesn't sell out within their time period, we don't have a time limit for that sales office there.
So, correct, that would be that stipulation that the Planning and Zoning Commission added that five-year review. So if they don't fully build out within that five-year period, this item will come back and we will address any concerns that are outstanding for the project.
Okay, so even if it's just half sold.
So if it's half sold, if we want to.
The sales office could then be removed.
I just want to add, at the planning commission, the applicant mentioned that the sales trailer itself would be removed as soon as the model home was completed. So once the model homes are completed, the sales trailer is going away.
Great, and that solves everything, thanks. Bill, if you could clear out that, whatever you got on this.
Yes, yes, of course.
I just have a curious question. Unlock eight, seven and eight, the north end, they got that area there that shaded in there.
I would assume it is the leach field for the lot itself. However, the engineer is, or the applicant is in the audience, so if you would like to address this question with him.
Just curiosity. More than anything. I'm sorry. My question was what, what that shaded area is to the north of those two pictures? Or the top of the page?
Timothy Morris with Brown Homes. The shaded areas are the required leach field areas because it is onsite drainage or sewage. And so that blocks out the amount of space that has to be designated for that.
That for the existing system and then expansion, right?
That would be the, the new system that would be installed for that home.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm good. And I need a motion.
Let me sure I read right well this time. Okay, I recommend we approve the conditional use permit to allow model home complex and temporary placement of the sales trailer with the following stipulations. Number one, construction of model home complex cannot begin until approval of the Heritage Point final plat is recorded. Number two, sales trailer cannot be placed on the site until approval of the Heritage Point final plat is recorded. Plats, excuse me. Number three, the sales trailer and accompanying sites improvements, i.e. parking lots, walkways, portages, et cetera, will be removed within two months of the final lot start of construction. Number four, if final plat approval for Heritage Point is not received within one year of this conditional use permits approval, the conditional use permit will expire. Number five, conditional use permit will be reviewed at five years from the date of approval.
Second it.
I have a motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name? Motion carries. Let's go on to date. Consideration possible action to approve a conditional use permit to allow the temporary placement of a construction trailer for brown homes to be located nineteen hundred feet north of northeast corner of the intersection of Route Two North and State Route Eighty-Nine.
All right, yeah, final item for you is a conditional use permit requesting approval for an off-site construction trailer for the Brown Homes developments. This trailer is intended to be a midway point between the Heritage Point development and the Perkinsville forty development. This is, it's essentially a meeting point for their contractors. The applicant is the same applicant as the item, two items before, and they are in attendance tonight. The subject property itself is located approximately nineteen hundred feet north of the northeast corner of the intersection of Road Two North and North State Route Eighty-Nine. It has direct access off of State Route Eighty-Nine as well. The subject property has commercial properties to the west and south and agricultural properties to the north and east. The subject property has a blended zoning of commercial-heavy and agricultural five acre minimum. While a conditional use permit is not required outright by town code, section three point sixteen point C of the Unified Development Ordinance states that it is at the discretion of the zoning administrator to require CUP if the list, the use requested is not under the required, allowed use or mentioned use in the zoning district itself. Staff felt that the uniqueness of this item fell into this category as we've never really had one in the past or in the town's history. So we figured we'd bring it before your eyes to seek approval. So the temporary construction trailer is located offsite from the developments, intended to be their contractor's hub where they would meet and then dispatch for the day's work. The trailer itself is located fifty feet behind State Route Eighty-Nine. It is a proposing three parking stalls with one of them being ADA compliant. They do have an onsite portage on that will be screened from public view. And then the ground covering for the site itself will be a dust-free quarter-inch granite. This item also went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on October sixth, twenty twenty. Several of the questions that were asked by the commission, will the trailer be open to the general public? No, it'll be strictly for the use of contractors for the development or for the multiple developments. Will there be a significant traffic impact to this trailer? From staff and the applicant stating how many trips, it'll only be a handful in and out to sites. We do not anticipate a significant traffic impact for the area. Equipment staging on site, the applicant has indicated that there will be no storage or staging of equipment on this property solely for the review and contractor meetings bases. And then the setbacks off of State Route Eighty-Nine, per code, it is a fifty-foot minimum. The applicant did respectfully ask for a reduction to this for visibility to a twenty-foot reduction. However, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission did not afford a recommendation for the waiver on this. So for the recommendation, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to Town Council for conditional use permit to allow for the temporary placement of a construction trailer for brown homes with the following stipulations. One, the construction trailer and accompanying site improvements, i.e. the parking lot, walkways, and portages will be removed upon reaching ninety percent completion of both subdivisions, which would be the Perkinsville forty and Heritage Point subdivision. Two, any signage that is placed in relation to the construction trailer will be in conformance with town code. Three, landscaping and screening shall be required to help mitigate the view of the trailer off of Eighty-Nine. Site plan review will be required as well as an accompanying landscape plan, which the applicant had submitted. And number four, the construction trailer will be located fifty feet behind State Route Eighty-Nine property of State Route Eighty-Nine property line in accordance with town code. With that, I will open it up to questions and discussion from the council.
No question.
I'll turn this one.
I assume the purpose of the portage down there is going to be a dry spot.
Correct.
I'm good. I have a motion.
Make a motion recommend to approve a conditional use permit to allow the temporary placement of construction trailer for brown homes with the following stipulations. The construction trailer will accompany site improvements, i.e. parking lots, walkways, portages, et cetera, will be removed upon reaching nine percent of completion of both subdivisions of the applicant's subdivision. Any sign, number two, any signage that is placed in relation to the construction trailer will be in conformance with town code. Number three, landscaping and screening should be required to help mitigate the view of the trailer of highly denied site plan review and accompanying landscaping shall, landscape plan shall be required. And number four, the construction trailer will be located fifty feet behind State Route Eighty-Nine property line in accordance with the town.
Second.
The second. A motion is second, all in favor say aye. Motion carries. Joyce, would you close this out?
I'd like to make a motion adjourned.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.